Hey, the time is six P M here in the Rocky Mountains and I call to uh order the City of Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This is our regular meeting on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And this is a hybrid meeting. Um available on uh Zoom with passcode one seven seven three six six. And telephone number one seven five nine three five nine four five eight zero. And I will uh make a motion to see alternate Gregory or Callan. Of a second?
Uh, second.
Okay, motion in the second, uh voice note, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome, Gregory. Uh, then we have a roll call we need to take.
You activate your mic, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Connerton?
Here.
Commissioner Sims?
Present.
Commissioner Sippery?
Here.
Chairman Shaver?
Here.
Commissioner Waller?
Here.
Commissioner Davy?
Here.
Commissioner Kahn?
Callan.
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 All right, thank you. Um. Do we have any conflicts of interest to state? Seeing none, um. We will go on to receipt of minutes, of which we have, I believe, three. And this will need to do these one by one. Um. First off is the September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Um, I. There's just a few minor.
So.
There was a few things, just spelling silly. Instead of action I ten, maybe action item. I don't know if that makes a huge difference.
Do you want to make a motion to accept?
I will make a motion to accept the minutes from November, I mean, September. And uh with some minor corrections to um grammar. Instead of I ten, it should be item throughout.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Um. Let's see, Carolyn. Was that the meeting you needed to?
Yeah, I did declare a conflict of interest and I did recuse myself from the garage on Bennett item.
And I think under receipt of minutes on my printout, it just says July twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, Commissioner Waller.
Now what's that?
So does that mean that Commissioner Waller motioned to accept those minutes?
If you guys have edits or comments on the minutes, if you could locate the page and the exact items so that I can write that down. Um, and Commissioner Sipperly, um, the item that you mentioned, you had declared conflict of interest and recused yourself. Could you state the date which that was for and then the item where it's mentioned there, just for accurate recordings, we can get these updated?
Well, the date of the meeting was my birthday, September twenty-sixth. And the item that I recused from discussing was planning file number seventy-six. Nope, 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 not that one. Um, the one on Bennett. Uh, planning file forty-six, twenty-three, variance per garage setback.
And the exact edit to the minutes is what exactly?
The uh minutes say that no one declared a conflict of interest in item number two on page one.
I do have one, well, just a. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just roll call, page one. Um, I was not there. Um, and so if you go to the the third paragraph, uh, it says motion to see myself and Commissioner Houghton, but I was not here, so. That's all.
And my my question is on um item five, A, traffic circulation review, A, and Calvin. Commissioner questions, would lot requirements would still need? I mean, is it lot requirements would still need to be met? I'm guessing that there's like a couple woods in there.
Well, and this is under the item where Brian was talking about traffic.
Yeah, he was, and it was an update because I was kind of looking at the title of that. That was the, yeah, when Ryan gave us the update. It really wasn't, it was just an update. It wasn't anything for us to vote on or whatnot, but.
Right, but these items don't even address that. They're not related to traffic. They're related to some some other discussion, aren't they? Maybe we should.
Yeah, let's.
Send these back for.
Send them back for review.
Sounds like we're gonna have to do a hefty review on this one, but if you have other specific items, just listing them here is helpful for us to go back.
So on page four, um, I'm curious, and this might be a silly statement I'm about to make, so bear with me. But how is it passed unanimously five to zero when there's seven of us? Who is missing?
Usually that indicates um someone recused themselves or stepped out, so we can certainly review that, but it doesn't always match seven. Sometimes there are fewer. So if you could indicate which one you're talking about, we can certainly look at that again.
It was because I don't, it was a signed variance. Uh, wait, it was on page four. Oh, oh, please, my cursor's got a mind of its own all of a sudden. Sorry. Oh, please. My cursor's not working at this very moment. Can you look at page, can you scroll through?
Twenty-six?
Yeah. Sorry.
You know, perhaps you guys are correct and we should maybe motion to have this one go under review and come back to you guys as opposed. Uh, so.
I'd like to.
Throw that out there as an idea for September twenty-sixth.
I'd like to amend my motion to send these back for review with the um corrections and errors that we've identified. Got a few more.
And any others?
Plus any others? Could we send you, could we send you notes? And then, and then, and then at the next meeting, we could see what everything is and then approve it.
How about we just do the motion that Amy, Commissioner Connerton, put out with those mentioned, and staff is going to be doing a very thorough review of the rest with the meeting recording. So once it comes back to you, it should be all good.
Because there's some other, okay. I'm good with that. Okay, I'll, and I'll second. Amy's.
Okay, any other discussion? So uh call, well, let's do a voice, what, vote, voice vote on this. All in favor of the alternate amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. On to the next batch of minutes, which is for the October third meeting. I hear a motion on these minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the October third meeting minutes.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion in the second. Any corrections, deletions, additions of these minutes? Seeing none, a voice, voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And we're now on to the October twenty-fourth meeting.
How do I do that? October twenty-fourth minute?
I'll make a motion to approve the October twenty-fourth meeting minutes.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll make a second. Uh, again, there's uh Carolyn did um had to recuse herself.
Page one, number three.
Any other corrections, deletions, additions?
Um, I'm gonna because I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be kind of picky on 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 one thing. One thing I liked about the October third meeting minutes, which I thought the format was good, was that when it had Commissioner comments, it had staff responses adjoining that. And I mean, I'll kind of toss that out, but that was good for me when I read them. Then I know what the response is right away versus having to skip down and then try to match up the response with the with the question or comment anyway.
It could be a page numbers. If you would like page numbers, we can give us page numbers.
Okay, um. Seeing no other, no other comments, we'll call for a voice vote. All in favor of the amended? Aye, opposed? Okay, we have accepted two out of the three. We're on to uh comments for, from citizens appearing for items that are not on the agenda. And I don't see anybody online and apparently nobody here, so we will close the public comment period and move on to new items. Six A, planning file forty-nine, twenty-three, sign variance, four oh two, Seventh Street. And we have Emery here to guide us through. Okay.
Okay, Emery Ellingson from Community Development presenting on planning file forty-nine, twenty-three. I'll be sharing my screen. Okay, so for consideration today is a sign variance for four two Seventh Street. Uh, the applicant is Roaring Fork Sign and Lighting on behalf of the owner, Terrapin Investments. So this would be for Hotel Denver. Uh, four oh two Seventh Street zoning is M two mixed use central core. Uh, use is a hotel, uh surrounding uses, mix of uses, commercial, residential, transit station. Uh, so there's two uh action items being looked at, so there's two separate variances for variances from sign code. And the first is to allow applicant to exceed limit of one wall projecting or roof sign per tenant or use in a multi-use building. Um, so basically, one, when you have a multi-use building, one tenant gets one wall roof projecting sign. Um, staff has recommended a denial uh with findings and conditions on pages eight and nine. And then Planning and Zoning Commission's actions tonight will be, you could deny the variance, approve the variance using alternative motions as found on page nine of the staff report, approve variance with additional conditions, or continue item to next regularly scheduled meeting. And then, so the second action item, uh, the second variance is to allow applicant to exceed the maximum amount of sign area on the Seventh Street frontage. Uh, staff recommends denial for that with findings and conditions on pages eight, nine of the staff report, and then that applies. Planning and zoning commission has the four available actions. Um, so just to dive into these two separate variances. Um, the first is just talking about number. And so when you have a multi-tenant building, code limits each tenant to one wall sign, roof sign or projecting. They're called attached signs. So if you're one tenant, you get one sign. Um, Hotel Denver currently has, these are the three that are being replaced. And the three signage areas that are being replaced, so the one above the door. And the reason for this is that um applicant is doing a rebranding. And so the one above the door would get replaced. Um, Denver would be replaced and Hotel would be replaced. And because these are all new signs, the signage has to comply to code. And so that's why they're here with this variance. Um, so I would like to point out that they're replacing all existing signage areas with different signs. And they also are going to be removing another sign, um, which I'll show in a second, kind of the whole signage. Um, so again, that's this first item is for number. And then, again, so this is what that regulation looks like in practice, multi-tenant building. Each tenant has one sign of that type. And then the second variance is to allow the applicant to exceed the maximum sign area. And so this is just how much signage area you have on a side of a building. And the way that's allocated is you get for every, so like the yellow line, every one foot of linear frontage that you have, you get two square foot of signage, so like the blue areas. So that's how that's calculated. Um, and what the applicant has proposed is just slightly over the amount allowed. And that's actually a reduction of what exists, but they still are just slightly over. And so that's what has triggered the need for this second variance. Um, so this is a rendering applicant provided. So this is existing, see Hotel Denver, can't see that third sign above the entryway. And then this is what would be proposed. So you can see Maxwell Hotel Anderson. So again, they're over one sign. Makes for a variance. And then on the Seventh Street side, the total signage area, and that includes existing signage. It goes over um the maximum cap allowed by code. Um, so just kind of an overall overview, this is all the existing signage for everybody. So Glenwood, you know, Canyon Brew Pub, Hotel, um Mona Lisa. The way it exists now for signage area, it's, it's not conforming. It actually has four hundred and eleven square feet of signage. And the client is proposing, or the applicant is proposing three hundred and eighty-two. So even though they're reducing it, it's still above the limit, which is why they need a variance for area. And then with numbers, um, again, code strictly limits it at one wall sign per tenant. So this whole property already exists in a legal, non-conforming way because there's multiple signs for the, for the brew pub, multiple signs for the hotel. And so likewise, if the brew pub came in and wanted to redo their two signs, they would also need a variance because they're going over one. That's what code limits. Um, so again, have the different types of signage. And again, this is all the existing that's there. And then, so again, proposed, um, you can see, so sign C is one that would be replaced. And it would result in smaller signage area, but again, we're still over one. Um, and then again, the lower left corner, you can see just the total, total proposed is just slightly over the maximum limit. Um, which again is that second variance for area. Uh, and one thing I would like to point out, this hotel sign that is on the corner. So that is on the corner of the building, and so staff allocated half of that sign area to the Seventh Street frontage and half of the sign area to the Cooper Street frontage. Um, so which you'll see on this next page. So for sign area on the Cooper Street frontage, there's no issue. There's plenty, um, if I go to the proposed page. So the total amount of signage area you can have on Cooper is two hundred and twenty square feet. Total proposed is one hundred and thirty-two, so they're far below. They're. Um, but again, that hotel, half of it was given to Cooper, half of it was given to Seven. And the reason why, why is because it's on the corner. It's not exactly parallel to either, either frontage, so half to either side. And then, so again, so it's a variance, so there's seven criteria all of a sudden ha- have to be met uh for staff to find recommendation for approval. Um, I'll go through all these individually, um, but for variance, for action item one, um, staff found one of the seven was met. And that was, that would not violate building or fire code requirements. And then for action items two, uh, staff found that two of the seven were met, um, that it would not violate building or fire code requirements, and that is the minimum variance uh that would afford relief of code requirements. Um, so let's go through these individually. Um, subject property has exceptional shape, topography, building configuration, or other site condition that's not general throughout the zoning district. Uh, there are other buildings in the M two zoning district that are multi-tenant buildings on corners with signs, so that's not exceptional. Uh, strict application of code standards would produce hardship. Um, so code has to limit signs at some point of number. Um, so it may not be to the degree that a building owner would want, um, but it's not a prohibition of signage. Um, they're still able to advertise, so staff found it wasn't an undue hardship on being, you know, a cap on number and total area. Uh, three, applicant did not create the hardship by their own actions. So the applicant did not create the existing signage areas, which also are larger than what they are proposing. Um, however, by seeking to modify the existing signage, they are required to meet code. So they would be held to the one sign per tenant and then the total square footage on the Seventh Street side. Um, so that was again, created by their own actions. Uh, four, variance request, it does not harm the public and does not impair the intent or purpose of the code. Uh, so the variance request, it does not harm the public. Um, the signs would not harm the public. The proposed signage, uh, however, it does go against the intent of the code. Again, intent of the sign code is to provide limits, and again, it's one and then square footage, um, so that would go against it. Um. And then, five, the variance request demonstrates exceptional hardship not related to convenience or financial burden. Uh, again, not being limited to one sign, it's not a prohibition of signage. Uh, it's a limitation. And there are other types of signage, um, suspended signage, window signage, things that wouldn't fall into the limitation of one. Um, variance requests will not violate building or fire code requirements. And so neither variance would violate those requirements and sign installation would require a sign permit. Um, so that category was met. And then I split up seven. Um. So for the number of signs, the variance is not the minimum variance that would afford relief of the subject standards of the code. Um, so they're at, looking to change multiple signs and still keep more than one sign as allotted by code. Um, staff would consider two signs the minimum variance to afford relief in that sense for that action item number one, for the number of signs. Um, but then for action item number two, which relates to the total area of signs, staff found that this is a minimum variance that would afford relief of the subject standards of the code because it's only over by about two square feet. And if administrative adjustments were allowed for sign area, uh, this actually wouldn't be a variance. It could be approved administratively. But since that's not an option, um, they're here for a variance for the square footage. And again, part of that is because that hotel sign giving half of its sign area to Seven pushes it over three eighty. Um, so that's part of that. And so that's, that was a staff analysis for the two items. Um, and then again, if planning is only commissioned finds um contrary to that and would like to recommend approval, uh, you would use the alternative motions as seen here. So, good questions?
Great, thanks, Emery. Questions for staff? Pete, Pete.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Um. So. So when you say one sign, is that one sign on Seventh and one sign on Cooper?
So that would be, well, yes, one sign, if you have a multi-tenant building, you'll get one sign per tenant. There is a, a part of code that allows for secondary signage when you're on a corner, but it only limits that to one sign for all the uses. So for example, code compliance signage, like if you took all the signage off and started new, the brew pub will get one sign. Hotel Denver, Maxwell Anderson will get another sign. They will get their, their own sign, let's say, on Seventh. And between the two of them, they could decide to have another one on Cooper. But only one of them would get it, and it would be one-fifth of the size normally allowed for Cooper. So it's a lot smaller. So that's what code, took all the signage off today, put on new signage, that's what the limits would look like.
So only so the, so the square footage of signage by the street when you're doing that, like for Cooper. I mean, it's easy to crush that one, right? Because it's by code, you can only have one. If you, if you're trying to go by code, because all that's there existing, I mean, when they do the new signs, is they have to replace the Hotel Denver sign, but the brew pub sign, which is already grandfathered in is fine. So, so by code, could they have a second sign there, even though the brew pub's already there if they're grandfathered in?
For which, which, sorry, which frontage?
On Cooper.
So for the Cooper side, again, so I was trying to explain it as like.
No, I, I understand, like it's greenfield.
Still over one.
I, I, I've asked in that, so the brew pub's already there. They've got a massive sign on Seventh Street, and then they got a sign on Cooper. So for the, for the hotel, Maxwell Anderson. So, so, so could they have a sign per code on on Cooper?
No.
Because the brew pub sign is there?
Well, for two reasons, because they already have more than one.
Well, let's say, let's say they only have one, let's say they only, they only had one sign on Seventh. Could they have one sign on Cooper?
If with the brew pub sign already there? No.
Even though that's grandfathered in, because that's already, then you gotta go.
That secondary.
And you have to.
Yeah, it's called a secondary sign, so that this building already has a secondary sign on Cooper in that scenario.
Okay, um, when was the code approved? When was the new code? I mean, I mean, you, you had, when was it?
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen. Yeah, because you had that one thing of the different, of the history from ninety-one, ninety-three, ninety-five, two thousand fifteen. So twenty eighteen is when that's when the new code.
Correct.
Okay.
And that doesn't, so I provided that as, as background. It doesn't really relate to. And that doesn't, so I provided that as as background. It doesn't really relate to these variances so much. Um. Other than the fact that where the Maxwell sign, that could be a larger sign hypothetically. But the thing is, is none of those variances did anything to increase the total cap. So the fact that the Glenwood Canyon Brew Pub sign is so large, it eats into the available signage for Seventh Street. So that that's where.
But they're pretty close on the square footage, okay? Um and then what about the hanging signs? So like Mona Lisa has a hanging sign, and there's a hanging sign for. The brew pub, and you talked in there one place in here on. Hanging signs are okay, as well as window. I know I.
So.
Did a CMC, all the CMC building on Eighth Street and.
I'm gonna share my screen here. So the way code defines, and there's a little bit of a difference. So like the brew pub sign you see here. Is projecting from the building. It's not a suspended sign. So projecting signs are counted in the same category with wall and roof signs. And I, we count that towards the total frontage for Seventh Street. But this sign over here, the Hotel Denver one, that's hanging from an awning, and that's a suspended sign, which is. Gets cut out. So that's the, that's the major difference, and that sign's being removed anyway. So that was counted. Uh but that is a.
But if you had like an awning or something, and then you hung a sign from it, then that's.
That would be a suspended sign.
Wouldn't that be?
It wouldn't count towards.
Then that would be, okay.
But your maximum is only four square feet, so it's not a real big sign.
Okay. And then one line I could probably know the answer to this, but so the one. At the top says, you know, Maxwell Anderson Hotel. That's that's three, is that three signs, or is that is that is that is that considered? One sign because it's really one statement that you're making that's like a wraparound sign.
This one sign, so it's one basically. It doesn't really have a cabinet to it, but it's one sign.
You would count that as, code would count that as one sign.
Maxwell has one sign or the whole?
So Maxwell Anderson Hotel here above the door is one. Maxwell here is two. Hotel is three and Anderson is four.
That was my question was that, to what Carolyn said, is that one sign? Because it's, it's really one statement. Maxwell Anderson Hotel.
They are physically separate. Different frontage. It's a good question.
Okay.
And it would still be over one. So, you know, even if you counted all of that up on the corner as one, it'd still be a two. So it would still be in variance territory for just the number of signs.
Emery, can you go back to what it looks like now?
Just the like, this one?
Yeah.
Third corner sign that?
Uh this is, so there is the uh here. Keep that image in your head. There is this brew pub one right there. Yeah, they have.
Emery, you might understand.
Oh, sorry. What is being handed out right now uh for any of you that's are online are. Uh images of the existing hotel signage and then the proposed hotel signage.
And one last question, and can you just repeat how much they, even though it's not uh up to code, but they are reducing it by how many?
Yeah, so the existing amount of signage area for these types of signs on Seventh Street is four hundred and eleven square feet. And applicant is proposing three hundred and eighty-two point one, so.
Thank you.
Thirty-nine square feet.
Okay. Carol?
Um Emery, has the Seventh Street Salon sign been removed off the? The projecting sign that's sort of on the corner of the building on um?
So there's this photo in the bottom right um is existing, so it's just the Mona Lisa one at this time.
Okay, because on the the handout we just got, I still see the Seventh Street Salon as a projecting sign, and I don't know, it might have been removed.
Oh, so yeah, that's the Mona Lisa one in the photo on the bottom right.
Okay.
So it's still there as a projecting sign.
Okay, she's in that space.
Can you go back to the way it is right now on yours?
Um the rendering like that you have?
From current state, it's over there right now.
Photo?
Yeah.
Sorry, this? This?
That's the one we have. What's the one below that?
That would be the tallest.
Where's the one with the ho- with the brew pub one? Isn't there a better?
Oh, 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 um this one.
Yeah.
With the brew pub on the corner.
So that is.
It's just missing from the rendering, but it's 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 there.
Do we know if there's any proposal to put another business in this modern part on the right side of the building? Like, are they gonna be? Coming in here for a sign?
Um I mean, at this time, no.
Okay.
Um if they. Were to come in for a sign, they as a tenant would get one sign. They'd be on the Cooper frontage. Um so the Cooper frontage does have quite a bit of like vacant signage area left. So. If that tenant was fine with one sign, it would just be a sign. It would not be a variance, but if let's say they wanted to do two wall signs, one above their door right here. And maybe another one up here, that would be a variance.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
So back to the count issue, the quantity number. Um. The. Sign above the door, the entrance to the hotel, is that the second? Where it says Hotel Denver in that. Photograph. Is that the second?
Of the door.
That's the second sign, or that is one of two?
So. Here. So we're talking about, so this is. One existing sign above the door, Hotel Denver, one existing sign. A second one is hotel. And then the third one is Denver, that's existing. So that's a three. And then the ones they're looking, so they're looking at changing this one, so that's one sign. And then two, Maxwell, three, hotel, four, Anderson. And because they're changing the signs. They have to encode.
So if they were to hang a sign from that awning. Does that define the entrance to the hotel without creating an issue? With the sign code?
That would be a suspended sign, but if it was at that size that they proposed. That's larger than a suspended sign can be. Suspended sign can only be four square feet. So that would still, you'd you'd remove maybe it being part of the number, but it would still be made a variance for size.
So one foot by four foot?
Could be.
I mean. A lot of, lot of letters to get on that size.
Um for reference, so that sign F. Uh which is, let's go back to this other one, what is it? Okay, it's.
It's smaller, right?
Four point three one square feet. That's like, that's larger than code allows. That was approved with an administrative adjustment. So that's the size of sign that. You would get. For that entrance.
Well, um if if that sign happens, is it gonna be that color? I guess I can wait until the applicants come up and ask them that. Because you don't know.
I mean, I would say too that color is not really a subject of the variance.
Okay.
I mean, anything would have to be approved as a sign permit, and what's under consideration is the number of signs and how large they are.
Okay, so, thank you.
Sorry, did you want to say something, Greg? I just turned you off.
No, the the question was asked.
Okay, yes. All right.
I got a quick question. So on the the um upper right of this image we're looking at, I can see that the Maxwell and the Anderson are neon. What kind of sign is the hotel sign?
Uh that is also neon.
Okay, because it looks internally illuminated here.
So neon neon signs are the only types of eternally illuminated signs allowed in downtown. So they're all, and then the applicant can probably answer some of maybe the like design questions he may have to better than me.
Okay. Well, I guess we have no further questions for you, Emery, uh with the applicant care to come forward and. Speak to us. And please state your name for the record.
My name's Greg Post.
You have the floor.
Okay, uh yeah, this is what we're proposing. It's basically taking down the old signs that. Um I mean, the Hotel Denver sign is actually not to code, because it's a channel letter sign. Uh plastic faces, it's internally illuminated. Um and uh. Replacing the existing signs with the new name. Um I mean, I I feel like uh. Both, I guess it's four signs, but uh they're both needed, one for people on Seventh Street. As you're driving down to find the entrance to the hotel. And uh the one on the building that helps with people that are further away. From the bridge or even from, you know, from the highway to uh spot the hotel. So I think that they're both, there's a reason why they allowed them to put there and put them there in the first place. Uh there was a need for them, and I think the need still exists and.
Okay. Thank you. Uh questions for the applicant?
I have a question. I mean, you've kind of heard Emery's presentation, so for us, we have to kind of go through the variance criteria. Uh to say why some of these things are hardships and, you know, in 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 your application, you. You uh went through and said that. I was wondering if you could kind of go through and. Give us your perspective or your point of view on 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 the seven. The seven criteria that we have to.
Uh well, let's see, let's see. Okay, the number one. Um. You know, I I feel like the location of the building is a little exceptional. I I mean, I'm sure everybody's been on Seventh Street over there. And it's kind of like, you can't even take a picture of the building and get the entire. Frontage and Seventh Street frontage picture. So I mean, it's just limiting view to begin with. As trying to just have a big sign just on the one side. Uh I believe that's why it works so well on the corner like that, and that would be a uh. To me, the, because of the shape or the location of the building. That's how I kind of read that one as a person who makes signs and installs them. Is the point of a sign is so people can find the building. Um and I felt, I feel as though, given that location, it's kind of hard. You can't walk on the railroad tracks and see, you know. That's number one. Uh number two, let's see, the strict application of codes. Um I guess that's. Only allowing. Uh. To have one sign again, um is limiting because. Uh I think it could be said for a lot of these things is that um you can only really, like even if you're on Seventh Street, you can't really see the sign. Up above because the building's so tall, so you have to have that sign above the entrance in order to actually recognize. The entrance of the building and recognize that's the hotel. I, so I guess to me, that would be a, I guess, an undue hardship. Um as a business owner and wanting people to be able to find your business, I feel like that's important. Obviously, the applicant didn't create the hardship in his or her own actions, because the building existed before. Uh it's been purchased. Well, that can just not appear. Uh I just, I mean, I. I I don't see how it could harm the public. We're actually gonna put nicer signs there. It's gonna be more aesthetically pleasing for the public to look at. Um that'll really see how the signs themselves would be anything but a benefit to the public, so they could identify the the building. What's next? Uh I don't think this is a matter of financial burden or. You know, the applicant or owner being forced to do something that they can't afford to do, that's how I read this anyway. So I don't see that as being. Will it share? It's doesn't, I don't, it does not violate the building or fire code requirements. Um the variance is a minimum variance that will allow relief to subjects. Um I mean, it's. I guess it's a little more than a mini- minimum variance, however, it is just replacing what's existing there. So we're not. And we're actually bringing it up to code rather than. Guess that's it. That's number seven.
Good.
Yeah, so yeah, I guess the follow-up, like a couple of follow-up point. Did you look at? So one of them, and I think George was talking about it earlier, whatnot, the. The Maxwell Anderson Hotel that's counted as a sign underneath that awning. And yeah, I don't see how you can make that be a four, four foot square, four square foot sign, but but. So there's a lot of glass window space, and I think, I don't know if there's a size code for the. Using the window. Is 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 there? I mean, is there?
Not that I know of. The window vinyl is a, uh you don't have to permit that window vinyl, correct?
There's no permit required.
So no, no permits are required for window signage. It is like thirty percent would have to. You can cover thirty percent of the window up and you'd figure that out with like where the letters are, like it was Hotel Denver. Um. You know, what what you could see through would be counted towards the signage. So, but again, there's no permit required. So that's usually the way window vinyl works, is applicant has an idea, we look at it and. Give them a go ahead, kind of like a fence. There's no.
Can you have window sign lighted?
No. It's final.
But you could. Shine light on it, I presume.
I will have to check that.
Could he be a sconce? I mean, I don't know.
Are you talking like an interior sign or sign like five to a window, like a window vinyl?
I'm just trying to see how you could come around that, I guess. That's all I was asking.
Yeah, just state your name for the the record, please. Sorry.
I'm Tony Sherman. I'm the owner.
Thank you.
Terrapin, um. We're gonna modernize the front and have sliding glass doors, so. The concept of having a sign of glass there is. Anything can be considered.
What is the current sign made out of? Isn't, is that engraved into the building? Is that current sign where it says Hotel Denver? Is that engraved into the building? I don't know why I thought it was.
I think those might be acrylic. They're, uh I think they're acrylic.
They're blot, yeah, okay.
About a half inch.
Yeah, I mean, it gets really confusing walking into that building if you. Aren't sure what door you're supposed to go into, if you're going into the restaurant versus the hotel. Well, the whole, the current sign, yeah, it's, it's pretty big.
And I guess the the one other question I had was, um so you talk about two signs. And Emery says four signs. So you're, are your two? Are your two signs, the. You know, Maxwell Anderson Hotel, do you count that as one sign? Is that in, in, in your accounting or?
I probably do just because I look at that as, I mean, if it just said Maxwell, it wouldn't really tell us anything. If you said Anderson. So yeah, I, my, in my mind it is, but I understand the code is different.
Yeah, okay. That was my question.
I mean, the exceptional shape, would you say? Of the building because it takes up most of that half of Seventh Street. And then it takes up. Oh, like at least half of Cooper there to the stop sign. That's a pretty big area, big building to identify like who's who and what's what. So. I guess it's more of a statement.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll bring it back up to the commission for a motion on. Action item one variance request. To allow the applicant to exceed limited one wall projecting a roof sign per tenant. On a multi-tenant building.
Wait, so we're doing, oh, it's two separate action items, right? We're talking about the first one? Okay. So I would, for the, I'd make a motion to approve. Action one. Uh, to allow the applicant to exceed. The limit of one wall projecting a roof sign per tenant. Or use in multi-tenant building. As limited by section. Zero, seven, zero. Zero, four, zero, one, one, zero. With the findings on, no. Wait. Yeah. Page nine. Sorry. Hopefully that was good.
Okay, great. We have a motion to approve the variance.
Point of clarification, is that? And that's possibly from staff. Is staff recommending approval on that? No. So if you are not going with the staff recommendation, if you could review your findings so that you. Make a motion that approves with new findings to support your motion. That will be very helpful.
My, well, um.
Each one of those seven.
Each one of the seven. Okay, um, the subject property does have an exceptional shape. Uh, like I mentioned, I think it takes up half of Seventh and half of Cooper. Uh, the strict application of the code standards for which a variance would produce undue hardship. Um, I don't, I mean, I know hardship is a hard, high bar. However, um, you know, within. Rebranding, uh, for the company, I mean, it. You know, rebrandings happen all the time here in the United States and I don't see why we, you know, we would. Seek to deny something, especially if they say they're going to make it better, more. Uh, you know, it looks more streamlined. It would be a hardship. It wasn't a hard, well, it was not. Wait, the applicant has not had a part in the creation of the hardship, so they didn't choose to put up the signs in the first place. Um, it doesn't harm the public. I don't know how it would. Um, and it does, it could be a hardship to them because who's going to be able to find the hotel? I see the sign. Uh, for what's there now currently Hotel Denver really well when I'm coming across the bridge and I would know how to get there. Very easily. Um, what number was I on?
Think five.
Um, the variance will not violate building or fire code. Um, I didn't see any comments from, uh, the fire marshal. And it, the variance is the minimum. Variance that will afford release of the subject standards of the code and, um, they are decreasing. The sign, the current, like right now with all the signs that are on that building, they're, um, they're even exceeding even more. Than what the current code is and these guys are bringing it down, um, to even a smaller amount of square footage.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Connerton.
I'll second that motion.
And a second from Commissioner Sims. Discussion. Saying none, I'll call the question. We do have some. Discussion.
So, yeah, I, I guess, I guess, um. You know, I, I, I hear some of the stuff that Amy's saying and, um, hear from the applicant and, uh. And I agree that there's, you know, there's two. It's, there's Cooper and there's Seventh Street and the group hub is already there, so I can see. Maybe two signs. I guess for me, one thing would be. It seems like the sign, the, the, the signage could be done. Maybe a little bit differently or something for. To, to, to make it work out because, because it is, you know, according to the count by code, which is what we go by. You know, there's now four signs versus. Versus one is the, you know, is the approval. I guess I can kind of go with two, one on. Seventh and one on Cooper, and then it's a little bit harder for me to. To go with the whole amount. And I guess one thing I would that. And I don't go to the hotel that much, but I've been to the establishment next door maybe a few more times. But is, is that the, um, so I have no trouble finding the establishment next door. But is, is, is that there, there's glass and, and I'm, I'm assuming that because it's quite a bit of glass there on the entrance and in the hotel. Your new hotel and, and I'm assuming that you're going to do. Sliding, double sliding sliders that come out and. So, you know, I, I, I would, that would be something I would like to see would be, is there some way of? Of, um. Changing that signage there at the entrance into the, to the hotel. That's just my. Just a couple of two bits I have. I don't know. I have to think on whether I'll vote for it or against it, but.
Thanks for, um, for giving us your, uh, points of view and some extra information here. Um. I think staff did a good job of outlining why we should not be approving these variances. I do appreciate the fact that the area of square footage has been decreased in the proposal. Uh, however. I still think that it's, it's kind of over the top to. Try and get people from across the street, across the tracks, the river to the highway to be able to see the sign. So perhaps the sign. If it can be read, that part may be too big. Um, so I'm more in favor with the staff's recommendation. Um. I mean, this, the signs are sure good looking, uh, but I don't think I'm going to be on board with this one.
Well, I certainly see a need to identify where the entrance to the hotel is because. I think if you were from here and you're getting off the Rocky Mountaineer. And trying to figure out where the heck you're supposed to go. I'm sure there's people that direct, but. Having the, the entrance to the hotel. Is important. I guess the question in my mind would be, does there need to be that much? Above blasted across. I mean, being able to be visible from across the way I think is important. But, uh, how much? Is required to do that? I guess is what I have in, in my mind is a question. It is reducing, which is certainly a, an advantage. Or. An improvement over current status.
I mean, it, I, it does make it hard because the names are so long. Maxwell and then Anderson's so long. And then I think by the nature of how you do signage, I don't know. I'm not a signage human, but like. You know. To, to make it one sign to, you know, how would they connect? You know what I mean? Like, I guess there could be some groovy way to do that, to say it's just one sign as opposed to two. Emery's looking with. Because it's on a different facing.
Well, and typically it's looked at in this. You know, is it, like, if you have a sign cabinet. The sign is installed and it's all within one. That would be one way of looking at it, or if they all share the same physical attachments. So if it's running along and there's a piece, I mean, it gets very down into how that sign is physically designed. Um, you know, again, like in this case, there's. Three existing signs and three new ones that are going in their place. So there's similar locations and. Uh, but yeah, so the physical attachments basically in design of the sign plays a part.
If they didn't have the corner one said hotel. If they didn't have the corner sign that just said hotel, what would that change? That would reduce the square footage further. And reduce one sign.
Correct. So if they did, if that were the case, the action item two. Would not exist because it would be beneath three hundred eighty square feet.
Yeah.
And the thing is, though, is the action item one would still exist. Because with new signage, anything over one would be a variance. So, yeah.
Understood, yeah.
Did you want to say something else?
Yeah, I guess I had a couple of questions. One, so. So did the signs shut off at night like at ten o'clock? Is that?
Uh, no, so that requirement is for when you're within a certain distance of a residential zoning district.
So, so I, I, a question I would have and it's, you know, it's, you know, we're having a conversation with the. The applicants here, um. You know, I'm, I'm kind of okay with maybe two signs. And maybe there's some way, and I, and I kind of agree with George that it's nice to have something that, that. For pedestrians that they can see down here and, and then maybe there's something for a pod. But, um, I, so, so I guess what my, what my question kind of is, is with the, um. Would the applicant entertain a, a continuance and do a redesign? Kind of, I mean, show us something a little bit different. But I mean, I'm only one person speaking, so I don't know what the rest of the. People would think about that, but.
I mean, I'd say yes. I mean, I'd like to see the vote. Maybe it would pass, but if it doesn't, we'll come back with something that hopefully would pass.
So if it doesn't.
Quite work that way.
So, so if it doesn't pass, that then there. Is that right?
Then it's a no.
You could certainly add conditions of approval that stipulate how you might want it to go if you want to go in that direction. But yes, if you vote on it and it fails. You could take up a new motion or they would have to come back with something different.
April.
Just adding my two cents in here. Um. I am kind of more on the side of, um, Amy in this case and the, and others who have mentioned. Um, I think it's nice to see the, the hotel from far away. I think it draws you in. I also don't think it's totally out of character in terms of like the characteristics of our downtown, um, which is brightly lit. Uh, our downtown draws you in. So I, while the variance is, um. While it does require variances, I, I don't think it's like any. I don't think it's totally not a huge ask. I guess I'm not sure how to phrase it, but I don't think it's totally out of character, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Gregory. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I would concur with those sentiments as well. Um. And I'm also, I'm really not comfortable with any idea of us, um, kind of. Dipping our toes into the design category and, uh. Getting stipulations out there about how signs ought to be designed. Uh, I think that falls on the applicant to do so and we're seeing example here. Uh, with the question to. To vote on it.
All right. So. We'll call the question. It is a, uh, yes vote is to, uh, approve the variance.
For action item one?
For action item one only, yes.
Motion passes.
We're still waiting on one vote? Mr. Shaver?
Oh, I pushed what I thought was yes.
Motion passes six, two, one with Commissioners Connerton, Davy, Sifferly, Shaver, Cohen. Oh, sorry. Shaver.
Okay. So on to action item two. Which is the. Um, variance to exceed the maximum sign area on Seventh Street frontage. Which is. Allowed at three hundred and eighty square feet and proposed at three hundred and eighty-two point one square feet.
I would make a motion to approve. Action item two. Uh-oh, I just, my cursor. There we go. To allow the applicant to exceed maximum sign area on Seventh Street frontage is limited by section zero, seven, zero. Point zero, four, zero, point one, one, zero. And then I have to go through all the findings. Again. And my finding or, uh, it's my logic is exactly the same. Am I allowed to say that for the last, as is for action one?
Okay. We'll accept that.
Thank you.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Connerton.
Struggle with me. The struggle bus.
Oh, there it is.
Second.
Okay, when we have a second from Commissioner Callen. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations. Good luck with your new venture.
Who's Maxwell Anderson?
Yeah, who's Maxwell Anderson?
We keep it a secret.
Right.
I just get Maxwell House.
And so.
The long name.
So I bought it and it's, uh, really pre-printed. We're putting five million dollars. So I wanted a new name and. I actually came up with the name. Rachel Anderson, because my wife is Rachel and my daughter is Anderson. And then at dinner. I told him that and my son Matt said, what about me? That's where it came up. We're going to create a fable about a railroad conductor named Maxwell Anderson. Who beat up Doc Holliday and that's how he got famous.
I love it.
Creative license.
That's a story for the public, but you guys know the inside.
Well, we are being recorded.
All right, thank you. Okay, on to, uh, item seven, Commissioner comments, and I'll start with Gregory.
Uh, no, thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman.
None from me. Thank you.
Pete, no. Amy.
Um, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
No comments from me?
Okay. Carolyn.
Thank you for the great food.
Okay, I have nothing, um. Director's comments.
Um, so we do have our next meeting in December, which is the twelfth. Um, I believe some of you have already indicated. That you will not be available. Uh, thank you Chair Shaver for that. We do have, um. Two agenda items that will take up quite a bit of time on that meeting. Uh, one is going to be a new application for you guys to review, um, which is our ten forty-one applications. Um, this is something new that the city passed and so I would imagine it might take some time to get through. Um, this is something new that the city passed, and so I would imagine it might take some time to get through to familiarize yourself with that process. And the second is a residential project, um, that will also be going to city council. So two fairly large items for review on that meeting, just as a heads up. So if anyone else is not available on that Tuesday, as it's not our regular time, please do let me know so that I can let our alternates know so we have a quorum present.
Should, should we do a, um, I'll just throw this out. Should we do a site visit or anything? Is, is, is the residential thing something that we need to do? Is it like a big multifamily project or just?
I would love that.
I will look into that. It is, um, I don't want to misspeak on the unit count, but it is a larger, it's a major, uh, major site and architectural review that would be going to city council. Um, so let me see. I know December is a tough time for people, so, um, just a reminder that if we are able to do a site visit in order to sit for the item, you would have had to be at the site visit. So we can certainly attempt if that is something that is desired by the majority of planning and zoning commission. I'm seeing a few head nods.
So did you say? Have to do the site visit for money?
Yes, if you are not present for a site visit, then you cannot sit and vote on the item when it comes, uh, on the dais.
Would we do the site visit like right before?
Usually that's what we have done, yes.
Daylight's getting to be an issue.
Daylight is an issue. Well, why don't you look at that and, I mean, see what you think? Cause we can't, yeah, cause that is a deal.
Maybe like unit numbers would help us decide if it merits seeing it? Standby, sort of like your call up process?
I mix my projects together sometimes, so, um, I believe is, it is thirty-four, but I want to confirm.
We go on the nineteenth or the twelfth, twelve?
That's twelve.
Right before the meeting starts?
Generally.
Yeah. I've never been on a field trip with you guys. Do we need to sign permission slips, Hannah?
Yeah.
Do I need to get my?
Exactly.
I'll have to call my mother. I don't know.
As long as it doesn't get in the way of dinner, I'm okay.
Walking tacos, anyone?
Yeah.
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 Street tacos.
It is thirty-four units.
It's big.
Could you give us a briefing on what the ten forty-one is from the first item you mentioned?
So ten forty-one is a new application process we have, um, that refers to matters of state interest. And so we adopted that I believe last year or very early twenty twenty-three. Um, it pertains to activities and locations that would normally fall under uh, location and extent process. By adopting these regulations, it puts it into a new category and adds some additional review. Um, so as you guys know, location and extent applications get approved or denied, get reviewed by you. Ten forty-one applications start with you and get approved by city council. And it does allow for, um, a more scrutiny approach than a location and extent, as you're also familiar with. Um, so that is a section of code that we will be including in the packet. Um, and it will be new, so I expect there to be a little bit of a learning curve as this is going to be the first one. Um, and it is a, uh, line replacement for Excel, so a utility company activity that is quite large.
So it's the same type of entity that would come forward, but a different process?
Yes.
Because there's, there are, it's a state?
It's referred to as matters of state interest, but that actually refers to the authority granted to the municipality itself. Um, so that's just the title that we call it. It's, um, but you can certainly pull up that section of code, um, which is pull it up and it's, it's at the very end and it's our newest adopted section that outlines exactly why. So it pertains to specific activities such as a large utility, um, going in, um, and also specific locations. We also have this in place for activities, certain activities that occur within riparian areas of all of our rivers. So this was something that was passed by city council and added to our code, like I said, either late twenty twenty-two or very early twenty twenty-three to deal with these types of applications.
Okay. We are adjourned.